For the mayor-elect and the councilmembers-elect for your city of Selma, Alabama. I would like to ask at this moment that everyone with your phones, you would please, please, put your phones on silent. Because we don't want someone being sworn in and have phones, throw them off. Thanks. So welcome everyone. It's a true honor to be here today. On behalf of the state of Alabama to witness, celebrate this moment of renewal, commitment, and community spirit. Today's swearing-in ceremony marks more than just the beginning of new terms in office. It marks affirmation of our shared belief in the power of public service. To Mayor Walz and to the Selma City Council, congratulations. You have each earned the trust and the confidence of your fellow citizens, your neighbors, and your friends. That trust carries within a great opportunity and a great responsibility. The decisions you make in council chambers will shape the future of our neighborhoods, our schools, our economy, and most of all, our quality of life in Selma. As a representative of the state of Alabama, I want you to know that we are committed, working alongside you, to strengthen local partnerships, support you to another growth, and ensure that every resident has a chance to make it. Public service is not always easy. It demands patience, courage, and collaboration. But standing here today, surrounded by dedicated leaders, engaged residents, and the promise of a new chapter, I am filled with confidence that Selma's best days are ahead. Congratulations again to each of you. Thank you for your willingness to serve, to lead, and to bring good for your city. On behalf of the state of Alabama, I wish you good, I wish you the unit, I wish you success, most of all, I hope that God blesses you in all of your decision-making, in all of your actions, in all of your determinations, as you make your decision on behalf of the citizens of the great city of Selma, Alabama. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to stand as we pledge allegiance. Here is heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would like to call the station for the invitation, Dr. Gavin Simpson, pastor at SMBC Church of Demonstration. On behalf of the second missionary of Dallas Church, I give you the honor of being a Christian on this day. To all the citizens of the city of Selma, shall we pray together? Our Father and our God, the Word says that it is good and pleasant for brethren to dwell together in unity. In this time, we ask for the Spirit of Unity to be amongst us. We thank you this day, Father, for each elected official. May the Spirit of mea mya fall upon their hearts, that they will work vigorously and with so much passion for the rebuilding of this city and this community. And Lord, I pray in Jesus' name, that you will allow your Spirit to flow through the streets of the city of Selma. That, Lord, you will allow your love to touch each heart, that crime and all sorts of murder, Lord, will begin to decline. We pray this day for revival, not just a spiritual revival, but an economic revival. We pray that you will let your light shine upon this city in such a way that businesses will be interested again. We pray this day, Father, in Jesus' name, that we would join faith to faith, heart to heart, and hand to hand, for the rebuilding of our city. And it's in that holy name we pray, Jesus the Christ, amen. At this moment, I would like to know if you would miss if I did not acknowledge all of you current elected public officials and servants, you would please stand at this time and acknowledge. At this time, I'd like to call the Honorable Troy Harbin, and his oath shall be administered
And the vice minister Leo, and I'll ask you to repeat after me. I state your name. For follow.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Alabama.
State of Alabama.
So long.
So long.
And now.
A citizen.
A citizen.
Thereof.
Thereof.
And that.
And that.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of City Council.
Of City Council.
Awarded.
Awarded.
Upon which.
On which.
I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
To the best.
To the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Now, we will have the swearing-in ceremony for Honorable Chris Young.
Okay, everybody, the vice minister Leo for Ms. Young, Councilman Young. I state your name.
I, Young. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. The Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. Of the State of Alabama. Of the State of Alabama. So long. So long. I'm a citizen. Thereof. Thereof. And. And. I will faithfully. I will faithfully. And honestly. And honestly. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Of. Of. My position. My position. Councilwoman. Councilwoman. Awarded to. Awarded to. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Upon which. Upon which. I'm about to enter. I'm about to enter. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
Honorable Clay Michael, oath shall be administered by the Honorable Jimmy Dunn, probate judge,
I state your name.
Clay Michael. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. The Constitution. The Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the State of Alabama. Of the State of Alabama. So long. So long. As I am. As I am. A citizen thereof. A citizen thereof. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. And honestly. And honestly. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Of the office. Of the office. Councilman Ward III. Councilman Ward III. Upon which. Upon which. I'm about to enter. I'm about to enter. To the best. To the best. Of my ability. Of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. The Honorable Reese James, oath shall be administered by the Honorable Tavish Shalob,
I, I wish you, Jane, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and the State of Alabama so long as I continue a citizen thereof, that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office, Council of Ward IV, upon which I am about to enter to the best of my ability. So help me God. I, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Alabama so long as I continue a citizen thereof, that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office, Council of Ward IV, upon which I am about to enter to the best of my ability. So help me God.
At this time, this swearing-in, while the Honorable David Stewart, oath shall be administered by the Honorable Donovan McGuire, municipal judge, city of Selma. And oath shall be held by Pastor Gary Lamar Crone, Elwood Community Church. All right, we got the name. I state your name.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. Of the State of Alabama. So long as I continue a citizen thereof, that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office, Council of Ward IV, upon which I am about to enter. To the best of my ability. So help me God.
I. I. Ashley Urban. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. Or affirm. Or affirm. That I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the State of Alabama. Of the State of Alabama. So as long as I continue. So as long as I continue. A citizen thereof. A citizen thereof. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. And honestly. And honestly. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Of the office. Of the office. Councilman Ward III. Councilwoman Ward III. Upon which I am about to enter. Upon which I am about to enter. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
At this time, we shall have the swearing-in ceremony for Honorable Chris Young.
Do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. The Constitution. The Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the State of Alabama. Of the State of Alabama. So long. So long. As I am. As I am. A citizen. A citizen. Thereof. Thereof. And that I will. And that I will. Faithfully. Faithfully. And honestly. Honestly. Discharge. Discharge. The duties of the office. The duties of the office. Of Ward VII. Of Ward VII. And. And. Upon which. Upon which. I'm about to enter. I'm about to enter. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God.
Next, we shall have Honorable Michael Johnson, oath to be administered by his son and the
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. The Constitution. The Constitution. Of the United States. The United, of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the State of Alabama. Of the State of Alabama. So long. So long. As I continue. As I continue. A citizen. A citizen. Thereof. Thereof. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. And honestly. And honestly. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Of the office. Of the office. Of council. Of council. Of Ward VIII. Of Ward VIII. Upon which. Upon which. I'm about to enter. I'm about to enter. To the best. To the best. Of my ability. Of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
The Honorable Canard Randolph, his oath shall be administered by the Honorable Bobby Knight, J.D., president of Miles College.
I, Canard Randolph, do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Alabama. So long as I continue to continue a citizen thereof. And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office, council president, upon which I'm about to enter, to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Next, we shall have the Honorable Johnny Lawson III, who will become mayor upon being sworn in. Oath to be administered by Donovan McGuire, municipal judge, city of Selma.
I, Johnny Lawson III. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the State of Alabama. Of the State of Alabama. So long as. So long as. I continue. A citizen thereof. A citizen thereof. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. And honestly. And honestly. Discharge the duties. Discharge the duties. Of the office. Of the office. Of mayor. Of mayor. Upon which. Upon which. I'm about to enter. I'm about to enter. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability.
Ladies and gentlemen, the new mayor, council president, and city council for the city At this time, I would like to acknowledge and announce to you the two leaders of our city, the mayor and the council president, Johnny Lawson. And at this time, I am going to turn over the microphone to you gentlemen. You are going to give us your remarks, and then you're going to dismiss us.
Hello, everybody.
Hello. It's a good day to go. Good day. Good day to be here. This one. That better? Don't want to start off wrong, alright. Well, this is a good day. Now just want to give a special thank you before my remarks to, um, my college president, uh, President Bobby Knight. Miles is where I started my meaningful career as City President. So, uh, it was such an honor for her to accept it from busy schedule, so I really appreciate that. And secondly, I want to thank those who helped me campaign. Thank you. Thank you to those supporters who are there, who got up early in the morning and really walked the street and helped me, uh, through this journey. But there's one particular person. That's in my heart. Mama's family. At that time, that's a public official campaign. He's out campaigning at 9:00, 4:00, 6 o'clock. And I rolled over, looking for phones, see the calls and texts. He up there, don't matter if he know. And I appreciate it. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you for loving me. How you do. Uh, in spite of. And so, to all my family, can you please stay? Stay, stay, to my family. Thank you for your support. And so, it takes great support with politics. Thanks. Great, great effort. Great effort. And so lastly, uh, he and I don't always see eye to eye. Uh, but he's still a father. And, uh, he's been on the City Council for the past twenty-five years. So, thank you for your years of service to the City of Selma. Thank you for the work that you've done, and I'll take it with me. To Mayor, to the Council, uh, to my colleagues. I look forward to working with you. I look forward to us building the coalition that moves this city forward. Uh, one thing I do realize, we will not always agree. But we should always agree to move the city forward. And so, with those efforts, I think that we can transform this city and lead it down the right trajectory that is needed. And Mayor, to you. Uh, we've already had numerous conversations about how we will be. And, uh, I'm a leader that leads with a direct, transparent voice. You don't have to guess what I'm thinking. You don't have to assume what I'm thinking. And I'm not going to talk about it, but I do that. Uh, Mayor, it's about how do you bring, um, individual minds together for coming call. And so, Mayor, I believe that this city, God has brought us together for a purpose. I think in this moment, we're going to transform Selma into the way that Selma has never seen. I just want to acknowledge you, Mayor. Uh, that it's not really easy. A role is going to be tough. Just know we have a partner on their road. You have an ally on their road. And I'm going to do all that I can to support you and never know. Know this, I would never run against you. Get together, get together.
White guy. Black guy.
I want to begin with a message that carried me through this campaign. There's a sermon by Reverend Dr. Howard John Westbury. Entitled, Finish Where You Started. He says that when every God gets genocided. The devil gets involved for a reason. One, because it will prosper you. Two, it will bless others. And three, it will give God to you. Standing here today, I know that what we have put together is that kind of a sign. This isn't about politics or position. This is purpose. And when purpose comes to God, no challenge, no criticism, no chaos can stop it.
Come on, come on.
Because this work will prosper our city. It will bless our people. And it will bring glory to God. So yes, there will be obstacles. But we were not called to shrink in the face of a challenge. We were called to finish where we started. So this afternoon, I give all honor to God.
Alright.
For His grace, His mercy. And His perfect time.
Come on now.
I stand here not because of what I've done. But because of what He has allowed. To my wife, Your Honor. Our daughter, Evan. My son, our son, Jackson. My parents. My brother. My family and my friends. You are my strength, my foundation, and my wife. To the citizens of Selma. Thank you for your faith in me and your belief that better days are ahead for our beloved city. Even if your vote was cast for someone else, I believe God still calls us to walk this road together. Because the mission to rebuild Selma belongs to all of us. And to those who have served before me, Mayor James Perkins Junior. Members of this council, Pastor President. And every public servant who has carried the weight of this office. I honor your labor and I thank you for paving the way. When I began this journey, I never imagined the role I'd be here. From student to school board president. From marketing professional to mayor. But here I stand, humble, grateful, and ready to serve. I don't stand above you, I stand among you. Because public service is not about titles. It's about touch. It's about showing up every day, rolling up our sleeves. And doing the work that makes life better for the people who call them home. This seat does not belong to me. It belongs to you.
Alright.
And I accept this responsibility with reverence, gratitude, and a heart committed to service. To our City Council. I want you to hear me clearly. I respect each of you and the vital role you play in this shared mission. We may not always be eye to eye. But disagreement does never become division. Our people don't want to see us fighting. They want to see us fixing. They want a government that listens more than it argues. That collaborates more than it competes. And that delivers results instead of excuses. Together, we will lead with transparency. We will act with accountability. And we will restore the trust our citizens deserve. To every city employee. From public works to police, from fire to administration. I see you and I thank you. You are the heartbeat of this city. You keep Selma moving when no one else is watching. As your Mayor, I pledge to create a culture that values your work, respects your sacrifice, and gives you the tools to succeed. We will rebuild prime in public service. We will celebrate excellence. Because you, the men and women who keep this city running, are the face of Selma every single day. My friends, Selma's story is still being written. The world knows us for what we endure. But I want the world to know us for what we became.
Alright.
Our camp- our campaign was never about politics. It was born out of purpose. It was born from the belief that we can rebuild Selma together. That means streets that shine again, neighborhoods that feel safe, businesses that breathe life again, and children who dream bigger than before. In the coming weeks, our transition team and I will meet with every department. Not just to review operations, but to restore alignment, accountability, and purpose throughout City Hall. We will listen. We will learn. We will identify what's working, what's not, and what our employees need to serve the people of Selma with excellence. These conversations will shape our first hundred days plan and ensure that every decision we make reflects the values of service, stewardship, and progress. But let me say this plainly. No plan, no vision, no program cannot succeed without people behind it. This is not my vision, it's ours. This is Selma's time to rebuild together. In the closing. In the book of Nehemiah. The people rebuilt the walls of Jerusalem. Not because they had wealth and power, but because they had heart. They worked side by side, family by family, each one taking a section of the wall. Selma, this is our wall to rebuild. Every citizen, every council member, every business owner, every city worker. We have each section, we have a section to strengthen. If we stay faithful, if we stay focused, if we stay united, no storm, no struggle, no setbacks can stop what God is about to rebuild in his city. So Selma, our rebuilding begins today. Not tomorrow, not next year, today. So today, I accept this call to serve as your Mayor, your servant, and your partner in progress. Accountable to you, anchored in faith, and confident that the best is yet to come. May God bless you. May God bless the Selma City Council. And may God bless the City of Selma, our home, our home, and our future. Thank you.
We're going to allow Pastor Grayson to make the conclusion of the opening speech. Thank you. What a great day it is for Selma.
And we, ladies and gentlemen, let's pray as we dismiss him. Bless him. For the Father, we thank you. Thank you for what you've done in our great city. We are entirely grateful. We see new horizons, and we praise you. We thank you for our new elected officials, our mayors, our mayor. We ask that you continue to bless each one of them in their respective places. Bless the Lord, every citizen that's here on today. We thank you for the food that's been prepared for us. We ask the Lord that you will bless it, let it be nourishment and enrichment to our bodies. Bless the Lord as we take leave from this place to take our spot on the wall. Each one of us will grab a piece of mortar brick and go to work doing your will. We ask this today in Jesus' name. Thank God. Amen.